Meeting to order. If you could all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Community members be able to participate in this meeting either by attending the meeting in person or through Zoom. The Zoom meeting may not be reliable and is being offered as a convenience. Public comment will occur during the public comment portion of the meeting and be done via raising your hand remotely or in person. During public comment, once acknowledged, state your name and words so that it can be included in the minutes, and please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment is governed by policy B E D H. Are there any additions and deletions from the agenda?
None.
All right, so we will open public comment. Are there any, is there anyone on Zoom? There doesn't appear to be anyone in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom?
There is not.
There is not. Okay. All right, then we will close public comment and return to it at the end of the meeting should anyone else arrive. Correspondence?
None.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the public hearing, let's do it one at a time, I guess, the public hearing minutes from May 10th, 2023?
I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing minutes from May 10th, 2023.
Second. A motion by MJ, second by Stephen. Are there any edits, revisions to the public hearing minutes from May 10th? Hearing, none. All right, all those in favor of accepting the public hearing minutes from May 10th, 2023? Okay, unanimous? Thank you. All right, can I get a motion for the public minutes?
Make a motion to approve the public minutes from May 10th, 2023.
Second. Okay. Motion by MJ, second by Steve. Are there any additions or corrections for this, for these minutes? MJ?
So, I guess Tim needs to clarify. Under item number 7B, the substitute rate discussion states that the current rate is $85 a day for pairs, but then under 9A new business, it says we're paying $84 a day currently for new pairs. So just want to clarify which one it is and correct it to the correct one.
He's calculating.
Eighty-four.
All right, so then we need to correct under 7B?
Seven B.
Are there any other corrections? No? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the public minutes from May 10th, 2023 as amended? Please raise your hands. All right, unanimous? Thank you. Okay. All right, I need a motion for nominations, renominations, and resignations.
I'll make a motion to approve the nominations and resignation sheet dated May 24th, 2023.
Second. Okay, motion by MJ, second by Stephen. Steve, does anyone have any questions about the nominations, resignations? I do. That's my question. So, the French teacher for LMS, is this French, is this a full-time French teacher?
I believe they said it.
Or is this the one that's sharing?
No, I think this is the full-time.
At LMS?
Yeah.
Okay. That was my only question. Are there any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion to accept the nominations and resignations dated May 24th, 2023. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous? Thank you. Okay, I think student report, we're going to skip because I do not see a student. So we will move on, unless anyone has anything student-oriented that they would like to report that they know has happened. Okay.
Just for the minutes, I would like to express my appreciation to the high school council. They made me a beautiful card with a lovely letter in it, so I just want to let them know that that was really meaningful to me, and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that moves us on to the leadership team update and the superintendents' update.
All right, what I think we will do first is go through the strategic plan, and I don't read every single box. I'll just go through some highlighted portions, and we did remember to page number them to make it a little easier this time. So, under page one, areas, culture, belonging, strategy 1.1, utilize a DEI lens to evaluate student and staff school and work experiences. Under B, determining a baseline, we have a shift toward common language is ongoing and organic, district curriculum documents are being revised on an ongoing basis to reflect inclusive language. An informal guide to bias-free language has been produced in a draft form by one of our faculty members. Mount Lev started a book club, and they're currently reading Every Day and Racism. Our SALT team has not gotten to the staff member level yet, but we did have a SALT conversation. Under E, providing opportunities to seek staff and student input, the middle school leadership team meets bi-weekly, the high school council meets regularly, and there are also grade level and subject team meetings district-wide. On page two, we'll focus on strategy 1.2, which is expand access to social, emotional, and mental health supports. The middle school will implement One Trusted Adult next year in advisories. The middle school is developing and refining protocols for the staff to navigate and support these situations. Mount Lev, once a week, we have a therapy dog meet with mental team once a week, and contract with Deer Creek once a week. They, Jack actually is training his dog, and they have counseling that goes to Hanover Street as well. Under professional learning, A, the district-wide work on the resilience-focused text onward, cultivating emotional resilience in education wrapped up in the fall. Onward be shared with new faculty members for the following years. Under C, working with the district social worker and the SRO, this is ongoing, and our district social worker attended the public health council mental health workshop, so connecting with the community. Under letter F, providing information, our director of school and community relations, Diane, sends out a weekly that now includes information from our district social worker about school and community supports. On page three, strategy 1.3, engaging students, staff, and families and learning opportunities. The middle school noted about using the One Trusted Adult. Want to focus on, A, expanding district diversity and inclusion committee. So Karen Dubois has met with the high school diversity and inclusivity committee. She meets with the faculty chair of the committee on an ongoing basis for updates. She's connecting with other school districts to explore how these other committees work in those locations to inform the approach we take this fall. P LDC, professional learning and development committee, formed a three-year plan work group that met in January, March, and that group has drafted a three-year plan which will be reviewed at the June meeting. New ways to increase engagement. The Todd A. One teachers hosted their annual family engagement night in April. Attendance exceeded expectations and the feedback was overwhelmingly positive. At the high school, the diversity, inclusivity committee joined forces with the World Language Committees to join and host the World Central Kitchen International Dinner in March. It was a tremendous success, brought families and staff together. We also had our 35th Annual International Hotluck, which was held at the middle school with a huge turnout as well. Seeking input, as we look ahead to forming a multi-stakeholder committee in the fall, this will be an early item agenda, and developing the baseline should be, letter F, should be an area of focus that goes along with that work. On page four, strategy 2.1, define and provide equitable access to an aligned, guaranteed, and viable pre-located curriculum. And the top language of that is by Marzano, and Marzano is a researcher that we base our evaluation system on. So if you see Marzano, that's teacher evaluation. Implementing the curriculum review cycle, letter A, the cycle is ongoing. Grades five through 12, discipline-specific work groups met throughout the school year. Across all disciplines, these committees are on track with eleven in curriculum cycle, using understanding by design templates to create a body of curriculum work. Twenty-two, twenty-three math resource pilot led to the adoption of the new curriculum, K6. K4 work included an exploration of social studies and science standards and an articulation of current practice via scope sequence documentation. Under B, the rubrics, it's ongoing. They are discipline-specific. For example, a detailed rubric was created for the K through eight math resource review process, and it was deployed as a selection program post-pilot. Outline, under C, outlining supports and services, available student services reviewed with the school board on April 2023. Reviewing the Marzano framework, administrative professional learning focused on Marzano as it's applied in our district is planned for August, and this learning session will include administrators who are new to the district as well as those joining us next year. Under F, scheduling staff, the middle school calendar for meetings for staff is set for recurring meetings, and the high school, Hanover Street School coordinates school meetings with Karen and has continued to maintain regular scheduled meetings. I know that's also happening at Mount Lev. Under H, universal design learning, UDL. Neil has been working with us for several years, so he was a keynote in March, and a group of educators attended the spring conference, and this provided an opportunity for collaboration about UDL implementation, including building alignment, productive discussions about moving the work forward for next year. There's a committee at the middle school in Hanover Street, and there's also work happening at Mount Lev and the high school on that. Page five, strategy 2.2, focusing on, A, determining which instructional practices are integrated. So Karen wrote that the faculty coordinator at the high school and three additional faculty representatives led the workshop for faculty in March. They focused on identifying bias in instructional materials. Educators were provided with specific tools for evaluating materials for bias and productivity, engaging students in anti-bias discussions. There's a grant-funded summer book study that we're offering in the school district this year with four different books, and the groups will be meeting with facilitators over the summer and have an opportunity to share their takeaways with peers in September. Under D, PLDC, we talked about the three-year plan that they'd put together. On page six, strategy 2.2, area equitable education experiences, utilizing a variety of assessments and educational data. This is something that I think the board is going to want to ask about, what assessments are we being used and what data is being collected so that you know as a group the different kinds of, the different ways we're assessing students beyond the state. There's lots of individual tools that each school uses, and I think you'd want to make sure that they're aligned. Under D, local and state data, this is ongoing. As far as evaluating school schedules, the LMS scheduling committee has worked on it this year. I know the other schools are looking at scheduling as well. Mount Lev and Hanover Street have embedded data meetings into their staff team and PLC meetings. And assessment work, we have understanding by design and all disciplines in our K through 12 curriculum work. Curriculum work groups five through 12 have moved from stage one, identifying outcomes and engaged with state, to two, developing common assessments that reflect the stage one learning goals. So there's been some good progress in that area. Page seven, strategy 2.4, develop student pathways that ensure inclusion, intervention, support, and enrichment for all learners. There are some links here that were created in January, so I just pulled those over. We're gathering information for review in the fall about current practices and pathways. We had a SWAC survey that Diane put together with her committee with some follow-up by Karen Woolsey, and HACTC, Mary and I attend those meetings, and they annually give us enrollment data for Lebanon, which courses our students are in, or programs our students are in. And those meetings were great. Mary and I got to meet a fantastic student. She was incredible. Every year, my favorite part is they match you up with students who are graduating, and they share their portfolios and their experiences, and it's just an amazing thing. Hartford's one of my favorite places, and it's really grown over the years that I've been here. On page eight, strategy 2.5, we're looking at, letter B, developing an action plan from the review of the Equity Survey. So Karen Woolsey, I'm sorry, Karen Dubois is scheduling follow-up meetings. Deo Muano was a consultant that worked with us for a couple of years. He helped develop the Equity Survey, analyze the survey, he met with the Infinity Groups, and he gave a presentation to the board last year. So we've kept in touch with him, and I thought it'd be helpful for Karen coming in at that time of the school year to reconnect with him and meet, and then meet one or two more times before the school year ends to help give a perspective of the direction for the diversity group that'll be formed in the fall. So we've kept in touch with him. On page nine, strategy 3.1, I'm sorry, 3.1. This is a section about facilities and the renovation projects. I apologize for the typo, principles is spelled wrong. Just wanted to note that I taught that right, so I apologize for that. There are ongoing discussions. This was filled in by Steve, so working with Tim Ball to identify the projects and grants, the FIP, and also talking about identifying projects that would enhance programming. Mount Lev's safety committee walk through the buildings. We also did an SAU walkthrough of our buildings. Page 10, the FIP was provided during the budget update, and as regards to the capital reserve fund, it sounds like Tim and Steve will be talking with you about next year, possibly putting in a warrant article to increase the amount that's in the capital reserve. So that's something that will be heading your way. Maybe a chapter on capital reserve history might be helpful for the board in the fall. Page 11, implement the revised emergency operations plan. So our operations plan, we have been using it for years. Dana did a lot of work on it. Steve is picking that work up, editing it, cleaning it up, and we had a Homeland Security Day, our leadership team did. They did like a faux event that we had to respond to and then asked us questions. That was a very helpful day, and it looks like he is working with our assistant fire chief to do the incident command system courses, 100 and 700 are school-related, and we'll continue to work with the Department of Homeland. Every year, the state asks for school districts to submit their EOPs, so I was thinking in the fall, you might want to have a conversation about our EOPs and where we are with those. Page 12, district facilities continuing on. Strategy, A, dedicated staff meeting time that has been established by the school technology advisory committee and the curriculum meetings, including tech integrators and labor and media specialists. We have included those folks in the conversations, which was really important. Develop fluidity with apps. So our district app coordinator, Tammy Morse, has come in with a lot of experience. She's been great. She's been working with groups to do PD on apps and software. She has also established an apps committee to review what the district is currently using and making sure they follow student data privacy requirements before the apps and software are renewed for use. If you recall, there's a huge tech plan that was expected every district to have in, that's pre-COVID. The template for it was a statewide template. It's pretty long, so if you're a person who loves tech information, that would be the policy to go to, but Pete has to maintain the security of our systems, and that's a big part of his job. Page 13, an update on device life cycles, letter A, lifecycle replacement plan is being reviewed and updated. We are planning on following a standard life cycle to refresh teacher and students. I noted that there's a typo in the word devices. On a four-year plan, as the equipment should be, becomes outdated and needs to be replaced to keep them up to date with the latest technology trends. So now we're on to 15. Strategy 3.7, improving communication. So this is ongoing, and Xavier has visited schools to make connections with staff members just yesterday. He spent the day in schools and the day before, giving that like face-to-face time with people because it's very complicated in answering questions. He has edited the employee handbook. There are links under the business section. You go to business, then HR, and scroll to the bottom on maternity and paternity information, and he's been doing a great job with all of that. On to page 16, engaging and advancing relationships is the strategy. A is surveying families and staff. There was the SWAC survey, and the analysis has been done, and it will be presented to SWAC at their first meeting in October, so that's going to be moving on. Building current connections, regular volunteers have increased in number, book drive has been arranged. We have strong school PTO organizations. I mentioned the SWAC survey. Accurate information is ongoing. There are weeklies that we send out, calendar dates distributed, and engaging district families and staff as active partners. The schools have been encouraging families for volunteers to come in and participate. And at the very top, 3.8, we have expanded our influence throughout the Upper Valley. So we have Valenee Spotlight, the Lebanon Lissur, the Upper Valley Business Alliance. We continue to use Facebook, Instagram has definitely increased viewings. The website is tweaked and updated as necessary, and Diana attends events and engages families and community members regularly. And that is an overview of the strategic plan and our updates. As you can tell, we really value the strategic plan. Our goals that we write every year are based on that, and as you head into the retreat, I hope you kind of keep these in mind for how the board can work with the administrators on meeting some of these strategic plans that are outlined. The support for it has been really helpful. Questions that I can answer?
Can you elaborate on what that One Trusted Adult program is? And it says the high school is in a pilot project this year. Do they plan to expand it next year at the high school?
It's a great question, and it's part of the SALT agenda, because when I asked people to put this in, that's the first time I had heard of this program, so I'm curious to learn about it, too. They must have talked about it. Do you know anything about it?
I do.
Great.
It was started by a woman who worked at a union, the Catholic Union, and went on to be a speaker and author of this book. And her primary concept is that the more buckets you have to put your good possibilities as a student, and the more support you have within your community in all different ways as a student, that you can make, you can compensate for possibly not having supports in certain places by increasing supports in others. So the most important thing is that you have one trusted adult. It's a really good program.
That's great. Thank you.
Patrick?
I had one question on that same page, two, page two as well. Mentioning the district social worker, at some point, we need to have, I don't know if there has been yet, a report on the collaboration that has happened between the social worker and the SRO. We needed to have that, like, once we've gotten to the end of the academic year, which we're coming up on, so if we could, and it doesn't have to be...
Yeah, they meet consistently. They meet at the schools if there's a team approach. They also meet together. We've seen them meeting together a lot in the SAU office, so they definitely have developed a positive rapport together, and there's some data about, that Miranda's been keeping, about the types of work that she's been doing and the time that she's in the schools. So I asked her to start keeping the data, knowing that in the fall, when you have budget conversations, and also in the fall would be like her first year, you'd probably ask her to come to do a presentation. So she knows about that, and she's set. She's also come to SALT many times. She's looked through policies in regard to truancy and suicide awareness. She updated the templates, told us what she was doing. She quickly became an integral part of our schools.
So I think that's, I think that's great. So I would just add to that report, reporting that she's doing, if, and if it's in there, if it's not, just add, how often is she interacting with the SRO, and how often are they working in conjunction with each other for each of those kinds of calls? Not, obviously, call by call, but categories of calls that she's operating with. I think that would help us to get a sense of that.
Sure.
So any, any kind of documentation of their interactions would be helpful.
Great.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
I have one more that's not mentioned on here. I had asked you earlier, but I didn't know if we had any additional information. Do we know when Alma, the switch to Alma is happening?
So we are in the process of doing internal training, and Pete has met with his team. There will be a communication out to all staff and communication out, you know, beginning communication out to parents, and in May, beginning of June. And then as they get more into the summer and laying things out, there'll be more information that's pushed out to the staff and to families before coming in the fall. So that is their, their plan. We will be switching to Alma, so there's no going back at this point. Tammy Morse, who I mentioned, has been hugely supportive in the trainings and organization of the flow of Alma, knowing that it involves so many stakeholders. And so she has come to SALT. She's actually coming to SALT again tomorrow to talk with the school administrators about their current setups, so it flows as easily as it can when Alma gets pushed through. Everything from like, what codes do you use for report cards? All of that has to get put into the system. She, she sees the value in Alma. She thinks it's so much more user-friendly, but the first time you do a district-wide change, there's going to be glitches and hiccups, but I underscored the importance of just sending information out in appropriate timeframes so that everyone is set to go. So they are aware of that.
And will PowerSchool data still be accessible for Alma? So like past grade reports and that sort of thing, will people be able to still get...
I don't know how they intersect, and you know, because you can't, you can't lose that data because it's file. that data because it's following. So I don't know if it gets pulled into Alma or not. That's more of a technical question that I think Pete could answer in the fall.
I guess I would, if there's going to be communications going out to parents, I'd follow up, that that's an important, frequently asked question to put in the communication to parents, unless you're going to want a lot of phone calls to Pete's office.
Right.
I know Tammy and Diane worked on the communication with Pete, so I can email all three and ask them, how would you word that question?
How, will, how will, how will parents and students access report card data, past report card data going forward? Real past class schedules, right? Past class schedules maybe, but if you have report cards, it'll be in the schedules. I mean, the reports will be there, but yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
So the students here, first student rep.
Yeah. Any other questions for the, about the strategic plan? So Joanne, if you don't mind pausing, do you have more update, or is this?
I was gonna have Tim do his update, and I was gonna do my superintendent update, which is a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. Can we pause, because our student rep has just come in, so that she can do her, she can do her speech before the rest of us has to stay here forever. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Oh, that's fine.
Hi.
Oh, try turning it on. Hold it for a couple.
There's a switch underneath.
You need to hold the button for a couple seconds.
There you go. Want to test it?
Hello?
We need some help.
Perfect. Hello. I'm Varica Nerala. I am a junior at Lebanon High School, and I am your student rep today. So at council, we're working on Spring Fest, which is like Winter Fest, where we put on a ton of fun activities for the students, and we just, you know, enjoy the end of the school year. So the seniors are going to be leaving. Our graduation is in eleven days, I believe, and we're all excited to watch our friends and family move on to the next big step in life. Middle school elections for student council has already begun, and so far, it's going very smoothly, along with elections. Elections for next year's school board representative has also started, and everything is due this Friday, so we should have results by next week. The language department had their speaking final today at the high school, and everybody seemed to do well. So that's our update for the end of the school year. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Alma before she runs? We appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Okay, sorry. Let's return back to-
I don't have an update. I do have the support staff agreement ready to be signed by you. And who was the chair of the negotiating committee? Is anybody, all right, what, Stephen, you're right. Need your signatures before you go, please. This is a prized document. It's been months in the waiting. Thank you.
So for my superintendent's update, I thought I would do a PowerPoint presentation. And if you don't want to hurt your necks, you can feel free to just sit in the front or whatever makes you comfortable. So our mission statement is, from the Lebanon School District, is based on cares, cultivates curiosity and collaboration, achieves academic excellence, respects and values diversity, encourages responsible citizenship, and supports the needs of every learner. A few years ago, the board adopted this statement. The Lebanon School District values diversity, social equity, and inclusion with the goal of building a sense of belonging for all students in our district. We are committed to identifying and removing barriers in order to foster an environment of respect and acceptance for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, nationality, gender, gender identity, disability, sex, sexual orientation, religion, or socioeconomic status. All staff and students will have access to the opportunities, resources, and support they need to attain their full potential. And one of the things that the board has a lot of responsibility on besides the budget is policies. So making sure that we continue to look at it with that lens is something to continue to do. This is a quote from one of our high school students, Elizabeth. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is important because they bring a community together. If not, there will be a division of walls that divide a community. That's why I continue to advocate that everyone takes steps to be accepting and compassionate to all. Furthermore, diversity, equity, and inclusion are like puzzle pieces, and we need all of them. For a strong community, can't have one without the other. Lastly, I ask that all of us continue to encourage people to not only be present in a group, but to be involved and have a voice and be respected. I want to talk about the highlights from my experience here over the last nine years. Our district provides more than an academic experience. We also support students by providing social opportunities, mental health support, nutritious meals, and a caring nurturing environment. I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with so many creative, dedicated, and innovative administrators and staff members. Over the past nine years, working together, a solid foundation has been created so that the district can continue moving forward. This includes the following: development of a mission statement, development of multiple three-year strategic plans, development of a diversity, inclusion, and equity statement, development of a multi-year facilities improvement plan, a multi-year technology plan, the annual budget, zero-based budget process, and the city joint partnership task force, which is open channels of communication and collaboration. We have added positions. We now have full-time school psychologists, student assistance providers, LMS and high school integration specialists, behavior specialist. We have an LHS STEAM focus, LMS special education coordinator, Mount Lab and Hanover Street assistant principals, district technology specialist team, a district social worker, and a district director of equity, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. We have developed the Hypertherm Fuji STEM internship program. We've improved student service programs and supports, and expansion of our summer programs. We have an articulated K through 12 math curriculum and the new math program. We have articulated K through 12 technology standards. We are working on science, social studies, world language, health, PE, and essential arts curriculum, and even using the term essential arts, that didn't exist when I came in. And we have accolades from the DOE focused on our ELL programs. We have a diverse collection of technology courses, including AP, computer science, drone technology, digital media studies, and others. And our students are digital natives, and Lebanon School is continually striving to meet their needs and their interests. We have increased dual credit programs, notably our partnership with River Valley, where our teachers become adjunct professors. We have student successes as measured by state titles in the Science Olympiad, future business leaders of America, and athletics. We have the renovation of the high school gym, the facilities' energy savings work with train. After many years of not passing the warrant articles, we have them for the renovations at Mount Lab and the high school in Hanover Street. New softball field, reconfiguration of the middle school fields, completion of the new track. We have a new transportation and facilities building, and increased use of seminary hill for school and community events. Development, administration, and analysis of the district-wide equity survey, support for multi-year CVAs that I'm leaving to, leaving finished, so there's a couple of years in between. Development and implementation of a paraeducator evaluation system, and development and implementation of teacher evaluation systems. When I began nine years ago, we were not in the top twenty. We are now number six in the state. We have seen large increases in English language learners, a fifty-two percent increase since two thousand and seven. The number of different languages represented, a forty-five percent increase. Those are the top languages that our students and families speak. And these are the number of languages that are represented currently in our schools. I am working with School Spring to be able to send out messages in languages other than English. So that's something that I have started with them. I have given them a list of our top languages and want to try to coordinate that in case of snow days or emergencies, and families can select the language with assistance and get that message to them. So we are working on that. I am also working on board docs. It was something that came through a couple of months ago. We have the platform set to go. They just need to finish downloading all of our policies. So they said they should get those in within the next two weeks. So hopefully, before I leave, that system will be up and ready to go, too. It's just a platform for where the agenda will land, and it's a platform for where our policies land. It's more user-friendly, and you can type in buses, and policies that connect with buses pull up. There's a lot to be proud of in our assessments. When you think about the pandemic and all that we went through, our students met or exceeded the state average proficiency levels in math, and of importance is grade five. And it's, until this point, it had been below the state average every year except two thousand and fifteen. And at the state level, New Hampshire students in grades three through seven improved their math assessments, while eighth-grade math scores had remained the same. That's the state level, and then that's our school level. For English language arts, students in our district met or exceeded state average proficiency levels at all grade levels. In science, our students showed higher proficiency in the SAS than their peers across the states. At the high school, approximately seventy-seven percent of the class of two thousand and twenty-two plan to attend college, with a strong majority opting for four-year colleges, and a few graduates choosing to attend a two-year college or continue post-secondary studies. We have students who graduate and join the military, and students who decide to enter the workforce directly. When you look at our SAT scores, they are impressive. Lebanon High School students continue to outperform students across the state, as well as their peers throughout the country. And I will note that our free reduced meal numbers and some of the socioeconomic experiences of our children and families are much more diverse than some of the communities whose SAT scores are equal or higher to ours. And we should celebrate that diversity. Our AP exam data, the percent with scores of three, four, or five, you can see over time, we had two hundred and sixty-nine students this last year take the one hundred and sixty-five different exams, and the percentage of three, four, or fives was eighty-eight percent. One of the collaborations I'm very proud of, and I appreciate the work of Bonnie, and Ian, and Joy Gobin, and so many people, is the Fuji Hypertherm STEM internship. We're going to be entering our sixth year. There are many students who want to attend this program. It has been very successful. When we needed to go remote, we went remote, but they are back in person. That's authentic, hands-on learning experiences. Students earn both high school and college credits, and the enthusiasm for this program continues. We also have a great relationship with the tech center that provides a fabulous experience for our students. We are a district that cares. Education of the mind without education of the heart is no education at all. I've really enjoyed being with the students. That's my favorite part of my job. One of my favorite pictures of all time, of these little ones. I climbed up to the mountain with the seniors that were going to be there that year, and it was really nice doing that hike with them. And I just want to thank everybody because it's been an honor. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional questions for Joanne or Tim? I have one. We had talked at the last meeting about the clerk of the works, and I was just, I know we had sent an email about that, that we had heard, and I just have, I have a, my question is, did we find, I know we were looking for information from the last time that we used one of those, did we find that information?
Yeah, I, I was able to access the old middle school files and found, I didn't find the RFP that went out, but I found the contract with the last, with Steve Horton, who was the owner's rep we used then. And then I, I did get in contact with him to ask him like what it would cost, you know, today, and he estimated between one hundred and twenty-five and one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, a lot of the stuff on there, a lot of the requirements on that contract that he had are in the, are in the past of the project now. So a lot of it was assisting in finding a owner's, I mean, a construction manager, sorry, Ekman, and developing a budget and reviewing the bids to go out, and the bids to go out, and then the response to those bids. So probably forty percent of that stuff that was on that contract is gone, is in the past. So I don't know what that would do to the, to the price. He, we paid one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for his services for that, and going, and then in the future, it's interfacing on a daily basis and reviewing the, the construction, like the bill that comes in. The bills that come in are, and I get them from, from Mount Lab, they're not just a bill. It's, it goes section by section of what was done, and, and, and that gets reviewed now by, Ekman submits the bill, and it gets reviewed by Paul Maranace. And for this project, the owner's rep was, was another set of eyes before it came to I got off track. You know, so, you know, day-to-day sort of interface with the, with the, with the, with the construction team. So that's the sort of stuff that isn't in the past, as I look at that contract. But as we mentioned before, recently and in the past, as we talked about these building projects, you know, the, you know, the, the ideas, you get an owner's rep at the table, you pick the architect, I remember Paul saying this, too, you pick the architect, then you, the architect helps you put an RFP out for a owner's rep or clerk of the works. It's sort of basically the same thing. And then after that, begins the process to find a construction manager. So that's, you know, in a typical world, this would have, you know, this sort of discussion would have happened before, before we chose Ekman.
And so going forward, the responsibilities would mainly be the day-to-day assess, sort of keeping track of the building sites? Is that what you just said?
Right, right. And reviewing the invoices for Ekman, because, you know, in theory, the construction manager says, I'm owed six hundred thousand dollars for this period, and this piece of the contract is fifty percent done, you know, he says, no, you're actually only forty percent done, or I agree with that. So that's a, that's what I mean when I say reviewing the bills, and then it comes to me and I pay it.
So at this point, sort of peeling backing on that, at this point, if the board decides that they do want to move forward with pursuing a clerk of the works, what is that process? So a couple of things to kind of begin with. We, we talked with Paul, and we talked with Ekman. Ekman doesn't get a certain percentage of any savings. And so sometimes the clerk of the works is keeping their eye on the subcontractors to make sure that that's not happening. Ekman is a construction management company, not a construction company. So in that sense, they provide that level. If, if the board had wanted a clerk of the works, it would, would have been valuable to know that in January, because this project is beginning this week. By the time an RFP goes out and everything like that, it's three to four months down the line. So then you're paying somebody something to do redundant work, which is the exact words that Paul used, and he wrote to me, because they already have the systems in place. They also mentioned that, you know, for this district, it feels like a big project, but this is not a big project. It's four classrooms, it's a cafeteria out the back, and a new front space that they're quite comfortable being able to do. They have had much more complex kinds of construction projects. Tim, you mentioned the one in Clermont, where there were children in the building, and they had to move them strategically throughout the year to rip asbestos. So that's like a complicated, or if you look at how huge the Mascoma project was, that was pretty massive. So, you know, I just want to share with the board that we just didn't have a side conversation, that we talked with both of them and said, what would a clerk of works actually do? Would this be beneficial? Their suggestion was, if the board wants one, okay, but it's not really a good use of a hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars. Adding to it that this person is probably going to be not hired until four months out, and then trying to pick up what they're doing on a daily basis. I mean, the person running the, the actual job site, you know, you see the trailer, Jeff's there all day. He's on top of everything that's happening. We had a great relationship at Mount Lab, and so I know that he's already building a positive relationship at Hanover Street. He worked with us, you know, the city snowplow, put a bunch of snow in front of a neighbor's driveway, you know, they worked with us. Steve went out and actually shoveled the snow. So, you know, they're very much on top of things. So I would, I would say those would be the points, Wendy, when you're talking about if the board were to vote to now add this additional rule in. It's the timing of it. It might be if you do another renovation project, that in the notes, it's important to say, the board should consider a clerk of work if that's something that you decide to do down the line.
Well, not excitingly, that the, there's an excavator started today. So if you go behind the Hanover Street gym, you'll see the excavator in a big hole, so it's exciting.
I guess the, you know, my question was more, what is the process?
I guess the, you know, my question was more, what is the process if we, if we wanted to move forward with this? I don't recall any discussions at the board level about whether we should have a clerk of the works or not. So, I understand that we're behind, but I'm not sure that the board has had this discussion. So, I think it's worthy, worthy discussion to have.
The process would be to develop an RFP in, I wouldn't do it in my own silo, I would do it in conjunction with Paul, of what we would want the clerk of the works to do going forward, because, again, a lot of the duties are in the past. Issue that RFP, and we would want to leave it open. Again, I would check with Paul, but I would assume about a month, we'd want to keep it open and publish it out. There's construction places, you publish it, get responses back. That would take a few weeks to evaluate the responses. Probably want to interview the board, maybe the finance facilities committee, and whatever. There needs to be an interview process of the, of the top recipients. And then, if you like one, then, then you choose, but, you know, as you had, I don't say but. I expect that whole process would probably take three months, you know, if you put an RFP out. Again, you gotta leave it open for probably a month while people see it and review it. And then getting, selecting candidates, getting an interview, and making a decision. You know, I would say it's going to be probably October, assuming that this takes a week or two to get going.
But we're anticipating this project to take two years?
Right.
They're not taking two years?
Well, probably at least eighteen months, I think, yeah.
So, if the process of doing the RFQ, I mean, that doesn't cost, like that, going through that process doesn't cost us anything?
I'm wondering why you feel there should be a clerk of works when we know that in this, in this, in this job that we're doing, it's not necessary. We didn't have one for Mount Leve, we didn't have problems in Mount Leve. So, I'm guessing, I'm wondering, like, what are you thinking might happen at the high school that you would need this additional person?
One, we should have had the discussion about it and decided as a board that we didn't want that. I don't know that that happened.
No.
So, that's concerning. And, you know, when I went and visited Mount Leve, in the area where there's going to be children running and doing gym-related things, there's two beams that are, that separate that. So, I'm wondering how that decision got made.
What are the two beams? Can you explain that?
There's where the outside, the old outside wall, between the old space and the new space, there's two beams that are wrapped in mats in the middle of that space that kids are going to be using for gym.
That was necessary in order to structurally build that and to push it out. That's my understanding, Tim. Is that, are we referencing the same beams that we had several conversations about?
But there was no other option, or it was a cost-saving measure?
We never talked about anything as a cost-saving measure. In fact, when they talked about doing the flooring, they were going to keep the old flooring and the new, and we're like, you can't have a half-old flooring situation.
I just,
But I also would mention that the clerk of works isn't going to be a construction architect or expert. They're more so making sure that what is done is done at the percentage time of something, so if there are questions.
That they would have a level of expertise that nobody that's currently, or will be overseeing the rest of this project has.
I'm not quite sure about that, but.
Everything that I've been reading, including the manual that we had when we were originally talking about the renovation project way back years, in that it states that the recommendation by Paul's dad, I mean, Paul's dad was part of that. It recommends a clerk of the work, so I'm not sure where that got lost in the conversation.
Because when we had further conversations about the project, that wasn't, that was a recommendation in how to, how to build a school renovation. I remember that very well. That was what we got, it was an overview. That's based on the complexity of the project. So, when we looked at the Mount Leve complexity of the project, there wasn't a need for a clerk of works, it would have been redundant.
But who decided that? That's the question. Like, the board, it seems like that decision should have been a board decision, and I don't recall the board.
And if it was an oversight, we apologize. We weren't at all hiding a clerk of the work. We've had too much on our plates to even do that.
So, I'm just saying, we should have that conversation. That's what I'm asking for us to be able to have.
And I think we are, and I think I'm explaining from our perspective, do you want to spend a hundred-plus-thousand dollars of taxpayer money for a redundant position? If you do, great, we are breaking ground, we can do an RFQ, and you could have somebody on board in October or November. I just think at this point, a board vote would be helpful. I don't have a lot more information to share.
I don't think that the board understands the difference between, like, so, my understanding of a clerk of the works is that is somebody that represents us in this project. I'm not understand, my understanding is not that Ekman is working on our behalf. They're working on behalf of the people creating, building the schools, or building the project. So, like, they're, they're.
I mean, Ekman, we are paying, you are, you are paying Ekman a flat fee, a construction management fee. So, we've hired them to put out the bids. So, most of the work that's being done on-site is not by Ekman, it's by subs, and they are.
But they're hiring the subs.
Right, under, you know, they, under.
Getting a percentage kickback of what the subs do. It's a flat fee, right?
They get a, they get a flat fee.
So, they don't have a financial interest in whether or not the sub, or they don't have a financial interest to cut corners because they're not going to benefit of it. It's in their best interest to have everything built to standard and code because they're not going to reap any savings that they have on the subs, right? Because it's a flat fee.
That, that is correct. Their motive is to work for us, to be on time and on budget.
So, in essence, they are a de facto clerk of the works because it is a flat fee, not a percentage.
So, my, my question is, we know that right now, I think, Tim, you told us last time, that the four people who are sort of not overseeing is maybe too grandiose of a word, but who are from our, from the district, who are in, in charge of this particular project are you, Steve, Ian, and Jack, right? The sort of four of you are working together.
Well, yeah, I mean, it makes it sound like I left Joanne.
No, no.
When we go to these building project meetings, the four of us are always there.
Right, that's what I mean.
And, you know, and Joanne, Joanne has been there almost every time, too, so.
So, so that, we know.
We've only had like three.
Okay, right, so, so Joanne is leaving. Presumably, the new superintendent will be taking over that role, but she's going to come in, in the middle of this as well. You have another job. Jack is leaving. Everyone else has another job. I mean, I think that, to me, the advantage of a clerk of the works is that it's someone whose job it is exclusively to pay attention to our interests in, on a day-to-day basis on these projects, that isn't someone who has another job that they need to be doing, and who is someone who is presumably qualified to do these kinds of overseeing. So, from my perspective, it's not that I don't trust Ekman, which I absolutely do, or that I don't trust Maranace, which I absolutely do, but that I, I appreciate that I don't want to overtax the people who also have additional duties, and have someone that we're, it seems to me like it could benefit us to have someone that we're paying to do this specific thing, so that everyone else is freed up to do the things that they should already be doing and can already be doing. That's.
Well, we have such limited stuff that we are doing. Like, my biggest role is kind of talking with the city to make sure that, you know, we get a permit. But that's, that's simply an email because Ekman has already sent them all the information. Paul has already sent them the information. It's just kind of being in the loop. When we go to meetings, they're telling us all the stuff that they're doing. There might have been a conversation where Steve was asked to look into the fire system or something like that, but they are managing all the day-to-day stuff with a site person there. And when we have our meetings, they are giving us the whole agenda in advance. They are giving us all the minutes afterwards. They run the meetings. They've been very efficient. They've also worked well with the city and the fire department on being on top of things. You know, that's why the middle school project really went well without a lot of problems. And, you know, Katie can't say enough about how well they've worked with her.
You mean Mount Leve?
Pardon me?
Mount Leve.
Yep, Katie.
Oh, you said the middle school, you mean Mount Leve.
Oh, I'll just, um, thank you. How Katie has been so impressed with the way that they've worked with her. They started to work on the nurse's office, it was loud. They said, we're going to stop. We'll just come in in April, we'll crank it out, we'll get it done. So, I, I think from the relationship that we've built at Mount Leve, there's a sense of confidence that, one, these are experts, they do a lot of schools. It's not like they're new to schools. They know the, the schedule. They're already asking Jack and Ian, one of their students, out, what do we need to do? They're moving a gas line. They're asking when students are going to be out of the building, when are lunches? I mean, they've been really proactive with all of that. We haven't had to do a large lift. So, I just share that with the board, that, you know, if you want one, fine, but I, as a superintendent, I just can't recommend it. I can't recommend a hundred-plus-thousand dollars of taxpayer money for a redundant position.
Sorry, I think Lisa and then Jessica.
Are the, is, are the same people who built the middle school also did the rehabilitation of the Mount Leve?
No.
It's the same?
No, the middle school had a different architect, different architect and a different construction manager.
And was there a clerk of the works for that?
There was. It was the guy I referred to, his name was Steve Horton, and he's in the area, and I found his number in my file, so I called him, so.
And he left abruptly, and we met with him my first year because of his frustration. And I'm also, we're recollecting, recollecting that very well because the job was something where he was getting paid to do a certain thing that was redundant, and he was frustrated by it. And so, I'm thinking about the taxpayer dollars that went for that. And a lot of the minutes that we have are so concrete and clear about this entire process. When I went back to look at the middle school, because we had to figure all of that out, we, it was so hard to find any minutes, any information. We, because if you recall, we didn't have a CFO when the middle school was opened. I didn't know that until my third or fourth year superintendent, and it took a year of backtracking to get the certificate of occupancy. So, hello, clerk of the works, where were you for that, right? So, you know, I just found that that was not a very useful position. And, you know, that's when you mentioned about those different pieces of it. I'm making sure, like, that we are getting that CFO from Mount Leve, right? And just following up on that. A clerk of the works isn't going to help with that. That's got to be me. As, as Tim knows, I invited the city manager to our last meeting to say, here's where we are, I want to make sure we're following up on it, to get the certificate of occupancy. So, we haven't had the best of luck with a clerk of works to get paid to do that work?
Jessica.
I mean, I guess what I'm hearing, and I appreciate the conversation, I think I appreciate learning more about what the clerk of the works is and sort of how our contracts are structured right now. I'm picking up some of that as we're talking. I think, to Lil's point, if our, if part of our intention would be to assist the administration in sort of performing your roles and sort of having the bandwidth to do that, and you are extremely clearly indicating that you don't really want that assistance, that that isn't something that would be valuable or helpful, that's, that's, you know, good to know. I think that that also, to me, means that the sort of accountability of sort of how, of results also then sort of lands very squarely with the people who are, are representatives, those administrators, so that will be, you know, that team. And I think as long as that team feels very comfortable with that, that's also good to know. But that's what that would mean to me. If you guys are really clear that you don't want another person to participate in that process, then that's important to know. I think the fact that the, if I'm understanding this correctly, we have our architects, but then we also have a construction management company who are not, they're not a general contractor, but they sort of are, because they're the ones hiring the subcontractors, but they're paid a flat fee, which is different than a sort of generic, general contracting arrangement. That is different. So, I think to me, that does start to back out some of what I was thinking the clerk of the works would do. That is an important distinction in my mind. So, if we're paying them a flat fee, they do, we are paying them to manage the project. So, I think those are, those are two pieces, two kind of key pieces of information to me. I, I hear that we probably should have had this conversation earlier, if it's in the recommendations that we have about these processes. But, I guess to me, those are two pieces of information that feel pretty relevant to the discussion.
What, Lisa?
I just have a question about, what happens when Joanne, when Jack, so I, what do you imagine?
So, Jack has been helpful in the sense that when they designed the plan, he kind of looked at it. He's been helpful because he attends the meetings, and when they talked about the parking lot loop, he communicated to that parents. Jack and Ian are not sitting there at the table as architects or as construction managers saying, make sure your subcontractor has this, 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 or that. The last meeting we had, you know, Ekman is so professional, they even brought a copy of the stickers, that it's going to be on the thing, because they must have multiple stickers, so they're already thinking about safety. That's, that's the brand-new level that they're at with this project of like, oh, and by the way, these people are going to come in, and here's the decal that you should look at. So, honestly, Jack has not been very involved with that. The new principal will be involved with it. Because we sit at the meetings, so they do.
I know, but what happens now if you're not there?
Well, I didn't bring the decals or give that information. That comes from Ekman with their years of experience working in schools. That's just what they do.
So, in your professional opinion, you believe that Ekman is working in our best interest and will continue to do so, and with a new superintendent and another new principal, that we will still be able to manage it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because they, they are, they're working on the exterior. So, they've already figured out where they're going to kind of put a corridor in one of the classrooms for means of egress. Like, that's all set. They're going to be doing as much as they can on all of those areas this summer to try and do the build-out. And they're already asking about athletic events and all of that kind of stuff, so they can plan it. They are planning months in advance, because that's their expertise, right? They're the subject matter experts at the table, along with Paul Maranace and some other architects from Maranace. And there were, we had a great conversation. We were both very impressed from the high school and the high school trailer at Hanover Street School, just about how they were laying everything out, or asking such detailed information, you're going to do this, and you're going to do that. We were there at the table to listen if they had questions, but it was very well-prepared and thought out. So, the new soup would start to go to these meetings, right? Would, would walk through the project with the architect and with them and say, okay, what's our meeting schedule? We meet every two weeks. What should I expect? And Leah would be there, too, and they would say to Leah, oh, you might want to let your staff know we're going to be noisy because we're working on thus and such this week. They did that with Katie, and it worked out really well.
So, Tim, what do you think?
Well, I think Joanne characterized the principal's role correctly. So, they're at the meetings. Really, they play an integral role in sort of how, how the project is going to be interacting with the schools. So, you know, hey, can we get in here early, even, can we have some guys walking in the building to check things out, for example? Or with Katie, it was like, you know, I have a field day coming up, and so can, you can't pave on the ninth, or whatever. So, that's the roles that the principals are really paying, is sort of how the project is interacting with the, with the schools. What else do I think?
Well, you're the business manager, so how the, the Mount Leve project has come in on budget, and it's on time, and it's under the specifications that we wanted. As a business manager, I mean, has there been problems that you think could have been fixed by having another?
I mean, I think the world of Ekman and Maranace, I think they do, I think they do a really good job. The only, the only challenge, if it's a challenge, like, again, I believe Ekman is there to work for us to keep the project, the project on, on time and on budget. And so, we make decisions with Joanne and me, that if we bring it, you know, if it's a big change order, we have to bring it to F and F according to the rules you set up, for, this is for Mount Leve at least. So, we make decisions based on the choices they give us. So, if we trust that Ek, if we think that Ekman is giving us all the decisions that are possible, or all the choices that are possible, then that's great. I, you know, I do see, at least in theory, an advantage of someone who's knows the industry, who say, well, did you think about this third option, for example? And, and I wouldn't know if there's an option left out, you know, I'm not an expert. So, the extra set of eyes in that way, I think, I think could be useful. But, I mean, we are, I don't want to sound like I'm a weasel, but we are, we are far down the road. So, you know, putting an RFQ out and getting, getting responses and stuff, you know, what? So, you know, putting an RFQ out and getting, getting responses and stuff, you know, what kind of response will we get? Maybe we won't get any response if we do that. Like, you're, you're eight months into the project, you're just now asking. So I, you know, I, when I go to these meetings, you know, and I, I feel like I, I know, I know enough to know what they're talking about, and I think Steve knows enough to know what they're talking about, but we're not experts. And so, I mean, an argument can be, that's what we're paying Ekman for. It's a very good argument, you know? An owner's rep or clerk of the works may say, you know, yes, that option keeps you on time and on budget, and this option might cost a little bit more and take a little time, but in the long run, is that a better option? And, you know, these, these are hypotheticals I'm coming up with, you know, but that's what I'm, that's the big, if I was thinking of what an advantage would be, that's what it'd be. The disadvantage is, is that it's really late, and we're not stopping construction.
Is it worth the money?
Is it worth the money?
Yeah.
Oh, man. I mean, I think that's a question for, for the board. I hate to punt, but, you know.
Is, I mean, is. Hold on, okay, hold on. MJ and Wendy, then Jessica, sorry, your hands.
Oh, well, I was gonna tag you on, well, kind of what Lisa was getting at, so we will have a new principal and a new superintendent. So has Ekman been prepared or put on notice that they're gonna have to have a sit-down on day one or two with the new administrators to give a overview of the project and the decisions that have been made, and the safety stickers and everything, so they can be brought up quickly to speed?
Yeah, we've talked about it for months, so they would, they know that change is out. We've actually been talking about it for years, right? So they're fully aware.
So Tim, Joanne keeps mentioning taxpayer money, but when we had our financing facilities meeting, you indicated that we've earned interest already on the bond. And my understanding is the amount that we've earned in interest already would cover, more than cover this if we decided to move forward. So we're not actually asking or taking taxpayer money away. I understand that we'd have less to do.
I'm bringing up, I keep bringing that up because it's important. It was drilled in my head by our bond attorney. So the money, any sort of interest that gets made on the money that's invested as a result of this bond has to be, has to be spent on the project. And so I bring it up because it can't sit in the bank after it's done. It can't, it can't be given back to the taxpayers. It's special for that project. So I keep bringing it up just so the architect and the, and the construction manager will have visibility of it. So there has been three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars made, you know, up until this point. The discussion was, keep aware of that money because you might be able to do some of the things that were cut out of the project.
Right.
If you take, you could take that money for that, but that, you know, obviously, simple math brings that down to around two hundred thousand dollars, and.
And we had to do a lot of modifications on that project.
At this time, two hun-, at this time, two hundred grand wouldn't get you anything further in that project. We have to do, we have to spend it somehow, but we couldn't do the nurse's office or something.
Would three fifty get you something? If two hundred doesn't get you anything, would three fifty get you something?
Right. I mean, the only reason I said you probably can't, because the lowest price on there was, I think, in the three fifties, four hundred, I don't, I'm going from memory, but.
There's a lot of stuff that happens in a project, just like the Mount Lab floor. It would look super tacky if we had the nineteen fifties floor and half of it was brand-new. Like, that came up, right? These are real things that you don't think about in the project. Or, you know, maybe the layout of something, that a little tweak could make something work so much better if you just had that little bit of money. You're, you're walking into a multi-million dollar project not knowing where you're gonna land yet. So I would be cautious about, you know, saying, well, two hundred thousand isn't gonna get you far, but what if you end up in something where, like, that pot of money would be perfect to use, so.
So I wonder, I wonder if there's kind of a third option here, like, you know, clerk of the works? No clerk of the works. Maybe there's something in between zero and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars being spent. You know, I, I wonder about maybe the person that you spoke to who, or somebody else, or even just somebody that we're familiar with who is first in the sort of trades, who we can pay a consulting, who can sort of have on retainer as a consultant, who we can, you know, you can call. Because I think that the points that have been made about there are a bunch of administrative transitions happening, and so I think that, like, there's a greater chance for balls to get dropped, or sort of as duties get, you know, as, as things get shuffled around over the next couple of months, and we've got a long project, like, having somebody who, you and the other folks who are gonna be sort of continuing to work on this, and the, the new superintendent, like, having somebody you could call, if you have one of those conversations where you're like, gee, I wonder if there's another option that Ekman isn't bringing us, like, would that potentially be of value? I, because I hear the point about we've passed a lot of the points where, you know, a, a full clerk of the works function would, would sort of have, where some of that value would be. And also, we do have a construction management company onsite that's gonna be doing a lot of the day-to-day stuff. That makes sense to me. But I think the point you're making about, like, it would be really nice if there was somebody else in the room who could say, hey, you know, there's a, there's another thing they're not talking to you about that might be a great option. So I wonder if there's a possibility of something that we could do there.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
In our RFQ, we could, we could sort of state that, I mean, we can sort of state what we're looking for.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we can, I mean, so we don't have to look for the full.
Yeah.
So we could create an RFQ that sort of states what.
I mean, we, we could also, and I don't know how the clerk of the works are, I don't know how it's normally structured, if it's like what the fee structure is or anything else, but we could also, I would assume, just sort of say, like, hey, we're looking for a consultant to be with a retainer and an hourly fee or something. And, like, have somebody that you can pick up the phone and call and talk it through with, who's gonna be familiar with the project and can get up to speed. Like, I think that seems like it could be a very good use of some money and some good insurance for the team without sort of doing the full, the full kabam.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I was thinking sort of along those lines, like, who assures at the end of the project everything they say they were gonna do is done and done to those specifications? And that would be sort of along those lines, right? If you have a consultant who can.
I think that, it sounds like that's the construction management.
Yeah.
I mean, they'll say that, but again, and they have this flat fee, but I would argue that they're, they're not our representatives.
We did a punch, we did a punch list at Mount Lab. Ekman did it, and I had, I asked Steve to walk along with him just because I wanted someone from the, from the district to have the same eyes that Ekman had. So, I mean, Ekman's responsible for the punch list, but I, I guess I'm suspicious, but, and I'm cynical because I'm like, I'd love to have someone who works for the district along with it, too, was my point.
I think that that's what, one of the duties of the clerk of the works, though, is to help create that punch list in the stuff I was reading. So they could do that.
Sure.
So would it be appropriate, then, to make a motion to put out an RFQ? And who will help you decide what to put on that?
Well, the board doesn't get involved with the RFQ level.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
With Dana or anything like that.
I would, I would do an RFQ with, with Steve and Paul Marinase.
So I'll make a motion that we move forward with an RFQ related to a clerk of the works or a consultant for the renovation project at Hanover Street School and Lebanon High School. Does that sound?
I think that's good. I, I think you're onto something. Maybe we can, I mean, I don't, this is all theory, because I don't know who would respond, but I, you know, somebody that could be another set of eyes if we felt we needed one versus someone that's deep in the weeds every day, and Ekman is saying, that's what we do, which is a valid point. I could develop some bullet points and talk to Paul about if we had somebody.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Would be a valuable use.
I think the intention is merely to give the team and sort of, like, the intention is to give everybody the resources that will help everyone to feel like they're, have the support that they need and that the account, and that they feel comfortable with the level of accountability. Like, we aren't there, and we're the ones who are gonna be asking some real strong questions if sort of things don't go very well. And I would think that, like, if we're sort of offering additional assistance in that regard, that it makes sense to tailor it appropriately to the, the actual need and to not, like, do something insane that maybe hasn't gone very well in the past. Like, let's not do something we don't need to do. But if there's some, like.
So we need a second on Wendy's motion.
I'll, I'll second.
So, motion by Wendy, seconded by Jessica, thank you.
I have a question. So the motion is more, if you can handle it. It's more about you asking, not necessarily saying this will be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but you kind of seeing what's out there with the multiple different possibilities?
Well, I think the motion is, if I understand it right, is, is to develop an RFQ of just what sort of services we, we'd need from here on, really surrounding like a consulting sort of role. And it has to probably be more like an RFP because we need to know the dollar amount. But the one twenty-five to one fifty was like a full-on clerk of the work job.
Right, right. That's what I wanted to just.
So we would, we would expect a number far lower than that for what I think you're talking about.
Okay.
But I guess, to tag on to Tia's question, so by voting yes, or is the, the intent of the motion that, yes, we'll send out the RFP, RFQ, but then we have already agreed that we're going to hire one of the, say, five respondents? Or is it just to see what the price is, what's out there, and then we're gonna come back and have another decision of whether or not we actually wanna proceed?
Does, yeah, do we need to approve the, an RFQ or an RFP, or do you guys?
You don't need to approve the RFP, but you would not, I didn't take this motion as approval of, of going ahead with hiring somebody. This is what, this is what the month's coming after George's.
I, I ask Wendy, what I, I'm having trouble knowing what I'm voting for. Am I voting for just putting a feeler out there to see what's out there and what's the price? Or am I voting to say, we're getting these and we will hire one of the respondents?
I think that you indicated that we would put it out there, see, I mean, it, it sounds like there's a whole process. If we were actually to hire somebody that the board, the board, then, is involved in the hiring process of.
The RFP, I would put the RFP, I'd say, the Nubbin School Board is interested in hiring a construction consultant, for lack of a better term. These are the things we would want this person to do. Respondents should submit their qualifications and a, and an hourly rate or something. And then the board would have to meet again, either in the fall or at some meeting or something, like, you, you would have to, I would not. I don't feel comfortable just hiring someone because I, I'm not, I'm not able to tell you a fee for that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess it, it seems like, although usually don't put a RPRQ unless the intent is to go through with the response. So are we voting that the intent is yes, regardless of what the price comes back, we will go through with the hiring process? Or we're gonna come back and then discuss it after we've had a fact-finding mission? That's what I'm confused about.
Yeah, I think, I think I, I hear your confusion in the sense that it's like, and I guess maybe this gets a little bit, in my mind, to the question of, and the technical difference between like an RFP and an RFQ, like, I, I might be lose, getting lost a little bit there, but it's like, are we, if we're asking for proposals, if we're sort of saying, we would like someone to do this, let us know if you'd be interested and tell us what your terms are, that's just sort of a, like, send us. What?
We don't have to accept the proposal.
We, we don't have to do anything about it, but let us know if you wanna do it, and then we're sort of on, we can then review whatever comes in. That's, that feels like one thing, and we can then make a decision versus saying, we want, we're hiring for this thing. Send us your stuff. Those are sort of two different things. What are the tech, what are the, what's the terminology difference that we would use in this conversation between those two points?
Just be careful because we live in a small town with only a few subject matter experts. And if they're gonna take the time to respond to an RFP or Q, and then we're like, yeah, we're not gonna go with this, you've just burned that bridge.
I totally agree.
That's fair.
We're very careful about that.
We can't put something out there not serious about, but it doesn't mean that you have to a hundred percent do it. The numbers are way out of whack, you know, you always have the right to reserve. But we, Dana, Dana beat that in the head. We don't want to put stuff out that you're not serious about doing. With the recognition that you, you always choose, you, you can't be put over the barrel because of outrageous numbers or something.
But I think what we're saying is that, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, like, we're saying we have the, like, the interest, I think it was, I'm glad you brought that up, Wendy. Like, we have money that we have made on the interest on the bond. We haven't allocated that to anything currently. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's, that's money that has no purpose right this second. And so if what we're saying is it's gonna be some amount, we wouldn't go for something that was more than a hundred thousand dollars because that would be, we would, at that point, we would be at the level of clerk of the works, which is not what we want. So if we get something lower than that, I don't know if it's gonna be twenty thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars, don't know. But if we're saying we might, we would be serious about something less than clerk of the works amounts because we do have money available to pay for a function like that, that feels like we're in a conversation that we're being serious about. And I guess that, to me, is what we would be voting on, is.
And, and Tim, just to clarify, it sounds like you, you are stating that to have somebody, as Jessica is sort of describing, would be helpful to you.
I think so. I'm just being, yeah, I think, I think it could be, I don't, I mean, I, I wanna emphasize again that I think Ekman does a really good job, but I don't think someone that does this all the time, who knows stuff, I don't think that could be a bad thing.
I think if we, I'm sorry, I just apologize. I, I wonder, i- in this conversation, is it helpful for, is it helpful for you if we tell you, like, for example, we would be most excited about, you know, a request for proposals that was structured as, like, a retainer and then an hourly fee or something like that, so that.
No, I don't, I don't think that's helpful at all.
No.
I think that I put out a request for, it's kind of a hybrid, it's kind of, it's kind of a hybrid in my mind right now as I'm thinking about it. Request for proposal, this is what, the services we want, and show us your qualifications. So usually an RFQ is just qualifications, professional, like architects, when we did an RFQ for the architects, we didn't ask them what the rate was, we wanted to know who the best person was. So this is more like an RFP in that we're telling you what we want. Also, tell me how you're qualified for it. And that will, an RFP comes with a price. And we have bids we've put out before, like, for snow plowing. We, we say we, no, we welcome a flat rate, we, we welcome.
Okay.
Whatever fee structure works for you, we actually let the, the respondent tell us how they want to charge us. And then we evaluate what that would mean, so.
Okay.
I would.
Is this something, is this something we should see the RFP before we actually vote on taking the step? Because right now, it's a hypothetical stage, right? We don't know what.
I, I think you vote on the respondents to the RFP. I don't really want, to be honest with you, I don't wanna show you an RFP, not because I don't trust you, but because there's a hundred different ways to construct it. You'll never get, you'll never get it put out. So I think you let us, the experts, and Paul's a big piece of that, develop an RFP that would be useful to the project, that wouldn't be a burden some, wouldn't be as little dupl-, duplicate effort as possible, because we don't wanna do that. And see what we get.
I guess, I, I, like, I don't know how other folks are feeling, but like, I, I feel like we should be supportive of that. If we have money available for something and it's a recommend, it's a generally recommended sort of position, and we recognize that there's pieces of it that are probably overkill at this point in the process and for this project, but we also have sort of a, an indication from the folks involved that that would be beneficial, and we have money for it. That feels like a lot of signs pointing there.
So I think, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna call the question, but go ahead if you want.
I guess you only, I, I agree with everything you're saying with one qualification. I think we should be careful in saying we have this money that has no other purpose. Right? Because, no, because, because.
Means it's not earmarked right now.
Well, right, but there are certainly things in this project.
Yeah.
That, that money could be well-spent on, things that were cut.
But I think that's also, we're gonna have a point at which we're gonna have that conversation, too, because if people come back to us and we, we haven't spent the money yet, we have, you know, this is only a sort of validation of the value of this proposition, not a sort of, like, yes, we're spending this money right away.
Right, that's why I agree, I agree with everything you said, and I think, and Tim finds that it would be a useful resource. And, you know, like I said, these are the experts that we have on, in the trenches. We have to listen to their recommendations. So if you feel that's helpful, I'm happy to get behind it.
Okay, go ahead.
So my only thing is that you don't spend too much time on generating RFP because you could get one online. I mean, you could, to refine.
He's done it before.
It could be a really simple, easy thing to do, so that you're not spending a ton of time to generate it.
Yeah, and we also have hundreds of RFPs in our files. So, yeah, I just wanna emphasize that it's not, you asked me, I do think it, you know, I think it'd be useful. I don't feel like we're swimming blindly or something, and if we didn't do that, I just, you know, you have to live with this building for fifty years, and I want to make sure that you, you guys are comfortable with the building you get, you know?
And I think, just to reiterate, we've said this multiple times, we do not feel that Ekman or Marinase or you all are doing anything poorly. I think the, that, that, we just wanna make that clear. That's not, that's not the application of what we're doing or even any of the suggestion that we're doing. Okay, oh. Okay, oh, okay.
Just one last piece, and it goes to Joanne's comment about taxpayer money, I think actually spending some of the taxpayer money to ensure that all of the other dollars the taxpayers have agreed to spend on this are spent in the best possible way, I think is a, a good use of their money.
Okay, so, we're going to call the question. So, all those in favor of the motion, can you read us back the motion? Do you, thank you.
I'm looking forward to the RFQ for consultants or clerk of the works for the Hanover Street project.
Okay, so, all those in favor...
Hanover Street and Lebanon High School.
Hanover Street School and Lebanon High School, yes, thank you.
And do you want RFP or RFQ?
Why would we say RFQ or IRFPs?
RFQ slash RFP, either one.
Bye.
Okay, thank you. We're going to do all of it at once. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All right, so that is Jessica, Tia, Steve, Lisa, Lil, Wendy, Kevin. All right, all those against, please raise your hand. Mary and MJ, seven to two. All right, thank you very much, motion passes. Okay, unfinished business, what time is it? It's eight o'clock. So, let's take a five-minute break, because during that five-minute break, we don't actually have a copy of those projects in this packet. Do you, can you at least send it to us?
Right.
Oh, do we?
Yeah.
Sorry, it wasn't in the package when I looked at it originally. It's now here, just kidding. But I think we can still take a five-minute break. We're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll be back, so, 8:05.
On there and we're not saying you need to carry twenty million dollars in a cap reserve fund, but you need to have a, you know, an unofficial number of at least a million dollars. We tried, we've had it over two, it was two and a, two point seven went four, two point five before we started this. These two big projects, so it is a, an un, we didn't know we had this opportunity to, to kind of save some of the money back when we started this, and I think it's a, a great idea. That's why it's number one on this list. Thank you.
So I just want to know, I know the boiler estimate has, was some time ago. What happens if we approve this and then everything that is on this list costs a lot more?
Well, this is, for the boiler, for example, that's the, to have him draw up bid documents, that's a boiler replacement plan, just to have our consultant actually draw, we have a price for the plans and a price, and an estimate of what it would cost to replace everything, but this actually buys, buys him to develop the bid docs for specifying, so then we can go out to bid with those boilers. So, I mean, I can do RFPs, but I don't want to do RFPs with, you know, drawings of pipe length and stuff, so these boiler, this fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Oh, it's just to get.
It's just to basically get the plans, and we can take that when the board wants to go out to bid for a boiler, and that's when we're going to get a big number like six hundred thousand.
And you know that that's exactly how much it costs?
Yes, well, it's, it buys the plans, and I think the, the plans were forty-five thousand, and the construction contract admin, he would be like our owners rep when we did this for the other thirteen thousand dollars. So the fifty-eight includes the plans and his running the project when we do go out to bid.
Is that train? Is that somebody else?
No, that's.
Mr. Penny.
Mr. Penny.
Penny, okay.
So I guess, can you just explain for the new members too, that the rank on here, and so if we don't end up with eight hundred ninety-six thousand at the end, this rank is the order in which things will be funded, can you go through that, please?
So, you know, I don't anticipate any problem, and, and, probably shouldn't pat my back too far, in my nine years, we've done everything that's on the list, but as I close the books, if it looks like I misestimated or whatever, I would start at number one, and, you know, if I could only cut purchase orders through number five and still give you a million dollars, then I would stop, so your authorization would be to, to fund the end of year projects in ring quarter, uh, as, as necessary as funds are available or something, but I don't anticipate there being an issue with any of these. So, you know, if we're twenty-eight thousand dollars short, we wouldn't, we sure, we wouldn't buy the new pole vault pits.
So.
Um, sorry. Everybody can ask questions at once, okay, Jessica, she's gonna, Jessica, then MJ, then Wendy, then Mary.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, it was just, I wanted to just follow up on the snow removal system for the top of buses, one, um, when we had talked about that, we were just curious about whether you had managed to talk to somebody who had used it, and we felt like it was gonna work, and that was all. Feeling good about that?
I do feel, I do feel very good about that, yeah. So if you want a picture of it, it's a system that, I feel like we, embarrassed we haven't had it before, but it's a system that you bait, you just gotta bleed, and you drive the bus under, it takes all the snow off the top, which is, you know, you can't drive with snow on your roof, and right now, we've been using roof rakes and trying to make sure no one gets up there, but, you know, we have a, no one wants to get hurt, our bus drivers are not, you know, the youngest, so we also don't, it's just kind of a no-brainer, I think, to spend, uh, money on, on a thing that'll keep people from climbing on roofs.
And to be honest with you, if it saves one injury.
Yep.
As an employer, workman's comp claim would cost us ultimately more than that, probably, so.
If we have to replace a knee, that's expensive.
Don't, don't even go there.
Steve jumped out of turn.
But so, but so, yeah, it's money well spent, even if it saves one injury.
Amen.
I just had a clarification question on the, it says new pole vault pits under description, but then it says pits and storage under notes, so are we also building a storage facility?
No, we're buying a, it's only like three thousand dollars, it's included in the twenty-eight thousand, it's twenty-five thousand dollars for the pits, but I wanted to assure you, uh, that we're gonna get them, um, I call them, mill van is a military term, a shipping container that's, and it, it can go behind a third bay in the woods, so you can't see it, but it's metal all the way around, the biggest problem with these pole vault pits, and that's, I said I don't want to buy them if it's gonna happen again, is that there's been a lot of creepy critters in them, yeah. So if we're gonna replace them, we got new, so the high jump ones were bad, too, we got those under insurance because they were in a place that flooded this summer, there was a, and so that was replaced a part of that, and so, uh, the pole up pits look, they look nice now because there's a cover that goes over them, but I said, I don't want to spend the money, or even ask the board to spend the money, and then have this happen again, so if we get a, like a sto, a metal storage container, the mice will stay out.
Can I just ask how you decide, sorry, how you do, how do you decide what goes on this list?
Hold on, that's a bigger question. Just a minute, that's a big question, just a second, Wendy, Mary, and then Lisa's question.
Um, so if there happens to be more money than what you're anticipating, can we, um, add more to the track relief? Is one question, and the other question is around the window trim painting, so the windows in the SAU building are terrible, and so are we really gonna spend sixty thousand to make them look nice when they don't even really work well?
Do you have an opinion on that, Steve? I had Steve come.
So the sixty thousand dollars.
Come to the microphone, so people online can hear you.
Sorry.
Well, I don't know, can you do it, we'll see, so push on the button.
If not, there's one right here, Steve, you can come sit with us.
There you go, you're on.
Oh, you were.
I don't think there's battery either.
Come here, yes. Maybe that should be on the end of year funds, new microphones.
It comes out.
Okay, so, uh, part of the process of getting the proposal to scrape and paint the windows was also to get pricing for new windows, because if we're gonna put sixty thousand dollars into painting windows, we probably shouldn't know what the cost is, so we, I entertained Marvin, a local window folks, they came in, they did an, an assessment, uh, and to replace all of the windows in the SAU, and to match the historical features, it was over three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We have to put a little maintenance into the windows, because, one, they look terrible, two, we have lead paint, so we have to do a lead abatement, so there's a little bit of a cost associated with that.
Do we have to replace them with historical windows, like, is that required because of the covenants of the building?
I, I believe that is a requirement, because it's on the Ha, uh, National Historical Society.
I think so.
I think one of your points, though, is that you can replace all the windows in the trim, that's a lot of money, you can do nothing, but it looks like not very good, or, you know, we, we, you can't ignore the maintenance on the building, uh, just because it, you know, seems like a lot of money, we should paint the trim, and we can't paint the trim without getting rid of the, the lead, so that's where that came from.
So even though you're confident that we can do all of these things, can we entertain the idea of moving that down the list, so it becomes the last item?
Sure. I, as far as your, um, um, CRF relief, unfortunately, the answer is no, just because of the logistics of it, I'm confident with four hundred thousand dollars, I don't know if we could do five hundred, but I have to do, we have to do a public hearing, so even with delaying this today, which is okay, I'm, I mentioned this the little, little last time, I'm gonna ask that you do a quick public hearing before your board retreat, because I, in order to get the money out of the cap reserve, I have to have a public hearing, and I need to know what that amount needs to be.
Okay.
So I, I can't wait, and I want to get it, selfishly, I want to get it done, well, if you don't get it done by the end of fiscal, this is all not, so I gotta get this done in June, so.
So hold on, um, Mary, and then Tia.
I just wanted to know if the locks on the windows at Mount Lab have been replaced?
Oh.
Because that's been on the list for a very long time.
The locks on the windows?
The locks, they don't have locks, most of them, that work, they have sticks you put in there.
I don't know.
It's a good question.
It's the first time I've heard this.
Oh, no, it's not the first time. When I first got here, that was one of the things that we talked about, so.
So we need to look into that?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, sorry, Lisa and then Tia, there was.
Well, there was a question about how we put the list together.
Yeah.
And so it's not particularly scientific, um, if something gets cut out of the budget, we put it on the list, Dana and now Steve, you know, being in the buildings a lot, talking to principals, um, if something comes up that seems to be pressing, that it's not something that we really think we can just wait for the next budget cycle, um, but it'll go on the list, in this case of the pole vault thing, um, Mike Stone emailed me, and he said, you know, I'm wondering, since we got new high vault, high, uh, high jump, can we get new pole vault ones, and I said, the only option that can do it quickly, this is like March, is to put it on this list, so, um, we solicit requests, there's been other, you know, in the past, there's been, we had to do some renegotiation of a teacher contract, and there was a, basically a bonus that went to the teachers, this is four or five years ago, that went on this list, so there's a lot of different ways to feed into it, but generally, it's a list that's run, it's almost always maintenance that, that drives it.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, my, my question was just about the painting of the windows, um, is one of the justifications, does that help the longevity of the windows if you repaint it or repaint the, um, the trim? Is that, right, I know that they're not great windows, but I consider it also being protective just to kind of make them last a little bit longer.
Abs, absolutely, I mean, any, on, any bare surface, mother nature's gonna wreak havoc with it, so it would, you know, we debate the lead, we prime it and paint it, um, you know.
But they still need to be replaced, is that what I'm, is that sort of the understanding I have, that like, like, how, how long are we gonna get out of these windows? Because, because, well, the three hundred thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money, except for the fact that sixty thousand dollars is a.
Yes.
Pretty good chunk of, I mean, it's a part of the chunk of the way towards three hundred thousand, so, sorry.
Uh, if I had to guess, and, you know, this is just a crystal ball, because there's a lot of environmental conditions, you're gonna, that paint's gonna last five to seven years.
And, and we're, like, at that point, will it make sense to replace those windows? I, and this is, I know this is a for instance, like.
Yeah.
But we need to, we have to budget for these things sort of ahead of time, like, one of my questions coming up here is gonna be, I'm concerned about the capital reserve fund in general, and I wish that we were putting more money, like, I'm very grateful that we have the CRF relief line item on here, and sort of, um, you know, I'm concerned about the capital reserve fund and like us building up towards it, and that's a conversation for next year's budget and everything else, but as we think about things like our windows and whatever else, I just sort of want to feel like, if you guys say this is what we should do, I'm, I'm gonna be supportive of that, and it seems like that's the kind of thing that we should be thinking about budgeting for.
I mean, I, I can't speak off the top of my mind if, if the window replacement is on the FIP, but if it's not, and needs to be, it probably already is, um, that gets funded out a couple of different ways, um, most, usually the cap reserve, but it could be in the budget if you wanted, um, so I guess it, it seems like you're asking, like, what if we don't do, what if we just punt on the paint and try to do the whole project at once, just theoretically?
I, I don't think I'm asking that, I think I'm just asking, are we, like, it sounds like you guys have thought through spending the sixty thousand dollars now, instead of waiting a year or two to spend the three hundred thousand dollars, because you think that it makes sense to do the maintenance to get us another five to seven years out of these windows, but we are gonna need to replace them, it sounds like, and we're, we're happy to live with them for those five to seven years with some maintenance on them? Is that an accurate assessment?
There was a lot of hold on the SAU, one, because we wanted the money to go to the schools first, and then, second, the city was interested in perhaps taking over the building and completely renovating it, so we held for these years, waiting to see if that was going to happen, and the city isn't interested in it, so my suggestion is, as part of the FIP work that goes on, identify the major things, it's not just the windows at the SAU, if you can put in new windows, but if you don't have good insulation, if you don't have all the other parts, the value that you get from putting in the new windows gets lost, because it's gonna eke out, so I think having a, a FIP conversation that involves a list that you both come up with, with prioritization of the SAU, would be really important, because the thing, the reasons we held off aren't in existence anymore.
True.
So, you know, along with that question, when are we thinking that we need to replace the boiler, do we also have five to seven years? Because a boiler and old window, a new boiler, old windows doesn't seem to make much sense.
Um, the boiler's fifty years old, um, and it's not highly efficient, um, but we're also talking about, uh, the building that has a poor envelope.
Yeah.
Right? We have identified water leaks, uh, sub slab, so condensate, uh, heating pipes and returns run underneath the slab, and there's been emergency repairs to fix those. The plan would be to get all of that infrastructure out of the, out of the sub slab, so we're not cutting up and ultimately disturbing asbestos, um, so it's, it's a multi, it's multi-pronged, um, it's a multi-pronged repair.
It'd also indicate that this boiler design goes to force to hot water from steam, and part of the problem with leaks is that the high pressure steam causes more leaks than water, but, I mean, there's a lot of work to be done at the SAU, and it's not a building falling apart, but it's also not, I don't think it's something you can do all at once, I think you're gonna have to tackle the boiler, you're gonna have to tackle the envelope, you're gonna have to tackle the windows, maybe in, maybe in segments, um, unless you want to dump in a couple of million dollars all at once, you know.
So, can I ask one more question, sorry? If we put, if we added sixty thousand to the CRF relief, once we got a better sense of the SAU and all the different projects and the timing with that, maybe that, those discussions would happen in the fall, could we take sixty thousand out to do the painting of the windows?
The painting of the windows would happen in the summer.
Is, is it definitely a summer?
It's definitely a summertime project.
But is it scheduled, do you have the ability to do it this summer?
Um, I have not scheduled, because I'm, I can't cut the purchase order for it, so I can't commit to the contractor, but, you know, I have been keeping the contractor, uh, up to date on the progress.
So we do have somebody if we approve this?
Are there any other questions about the end of year fund list? So currently, we have suggested, and I don't, we have to, probably have to put that into our motion, but we have, it's been suggested that we move in the order, just move number seven to number, to the end, is that what we move the, um, the window painting to last? Still keep it on the list, just move it to last if we are running low on funds, right? Because these are in order of importance, correct?
Correct.
I would also suggest maybe moving the snow removal system to number three, just because that's a safety issue, I know you insist you'll have enough funds to maybe make it down to five, six, seven, eight, but I feel like from a workers' comp standpoint, a safety standpoint, and being compliant with the law, that should probably take higher priority over a classroom renovation.
I'm not offended at all if you change the order.
Yeah. Jessica? I guess, um, I just, I want to circle back to the SAU conversation just briefly, um, because I, I think we should do, we should approve these projects, I think, um, you know, you guys have thought through sort of trying to get a couple of things done while we have the money, that makes sense to me, and I think I would really like us, like to see us take a, um, a holistic look at the SAU, I know that this is like an ongoing situation, and it, but it does sound like some circumstances have changed a little bit, and it does make sense to me that next year, or maybe at our retreat, I'm not sure when the conversation is most appropriate to take place, but it does feel like that's a holistic conversation that should take place before we allocate, before we kind of make more plans, um, because there's, you know, it's, it's a big building, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things, you know, that, that's, it's a complicated one, and I'd like to be part of a conversation about that as we go forward.
Maybe we add that to FNF for our fall, for our fall meeting, so we get the conversation rolling.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, put it on FNF, and then we can think about what holistically looking at it would mean.
Yeah.
And what pieces we would, we can guesstimate, and what pieces we can't because of any number of reasons.
I mean, I think there's just, I don't know the, I don't know the conversations that have taken place, but it does strike me that it's like you could, in theory, I think we could look at the SAU building, and I'm sure we've done this at very, this point, is, it's just an asset, and we can do whatever we want with an asset, I think, so we could sell it, we could do something else with it, I know that this conversation has taken place, but I haven't been privy to it, and if some of the circumstances have changed, it would be good to sort of like get an update on where the thinking is about the use of that space and the value of that space, um, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So if you give us like a history.
I love history.
Yeah. Because there's also, um, the deed has specific kinds of stipulations in it, so, that we're bound by, so.
So good for FNF to also have. A copy of the deed, I'd like to look at, and that would be good.
I guess with that in mind, then, it's, I mean, is there a harm in putting off the painting for a year?
Uh, they're just gonna continue to peel.
But they're gonna have to be replaced at some point anyway, it sounds like, right?
Yeah.
I, I think it makes sense to, I mean, like, I, like, I think it makes sense to do a couple of these things while we have the money sort of like here, because just always putting off all maintenance until you figure everything out is like kind of a recipe for then having a really, really, really insurmountable situation later, and so I feel like, it seems to me like you guys have done a thoughtful job of saying, like, this is a thing we can tackle, we have, we've had the conversations, like, I hear what you're saying, and I think I'm glad you guys are looking at what things you can check off that are within our end of year spending, um, so I feel supportive of that, rather than just punting on all of it until we know everything in the, like, that would be my concern about just like full hold.
Well, yeah. I would say the windows open, I know of every window in all the buildings, I mean, the windows open and they close and they latch, they're, they're just old and very inefficient.
I know.
That's it?
I said, most of them do.
So it's, you know, the windows need to be replaced because they're, who knows how old, you know, um.
You can still see the bubbles in the glass.
Kevin, you gonna say something?
No, yeah, I mean, I think, I sort of made my point, I, you know, spending sixty thousand dollars for windows that you're gonna replace in some short order, but if that's unforeseeable.
I don't know if it'd be a short order, I guess.
Yeah, if that's unforeseeable.
Right. Okay, uh, so we need a motion. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed end of year list FY twenty twenty-three, um, with the modifications of moving the snow removal system up to three, and the window painting down to the last item.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Wendy, second by MJ, any additional discussion, questions? Okay, uh, all those in favor? Okay, all right, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, Steve. Okay, um, committee updates, uh, finance facilities will next be meeting in the fall, Sunday at four P M. Um, Coliseum Committee will next be meeting Monday, September eleventh, at eight thirty A M. Uh, Education Committee, we met Monday, May fifteenth. Tia, do you want to talk about that briefly?
Yeah, uh, I think so, the updates, correct me if I misspeak at all, um, so the, the district has some ESR funds geared toward public learning loss, um, that needs to be used this school year, uh, there's going to be a thorough evaluation of ELA to discover the needs, uh, for grades K to two, uh, there are going to be screens to look for needed interventions, um, a new student management system is being implemented next school year, right, um, and then we discussed the study of our early childhood program, and questions regarding whether kids moving into kindergarten are having their needs met, um, and we have asked them to produce data on student readiness of incoming kindergarteners, and for a report on the ELA evaluations of the K to second graders, that's already being implemented, and we have asked for a, for a report on that, um, so, yep, that's it.
Great, thank you. Uh, all right, P N N will be meeting at some point, T B D, uh, the Student Wellness Advisory Committee will meet in the fall, also, a date to be determined, um, H A C T C will meet on Tuesday, September nineteenth, at ten A M. Area, met Tuesday, May sixteenth. Who talks about area? Is that, Joanne, do you tell us what happened at area?
Feels like it was a very long time ago, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I just had to think about that, um, I think we just, we talked a bit about the Grantham playground coming through, we talked about, uh, changes in, um, leadership in the different schools, we talked about, this is an important piece, the concept that's being reviewed at Plainfield to create an upper grade middle school that's hands-on, but they would be considering accepting tuition students, so that's outside of the area agreement, and would need to go through the process, but, by them telling us they're having a review process, Tim, that kicks into that area agreement three-year piece that I wanted to mention to you to look into, I mentioned to them that part of the area agreement piece also includes letting, um, the area group know the amount of any kind of project proposal, that we did that before we went to the warrant articles, so, and some of the board members here weren't part of that huge discussion that we had for a year on revising the latest area agreement, so, you know, you're gonna want to be very aware of that agreement, even though it was approved for ten years, if they're proposing these kinds of things, you just want to be aware of it, I think Sydney, um, or Dr. Ligu mentioned sending information out to the schools at some point, I don't remember if she's, I thought by the end of the school year, or the fall.
I think by the fall, their, their meet, their working group is meeting now, and then I think by the fall, they were gonna have more information.
So that was a conversation that, um, that we had, it was a, it was a nice meeting.
Thank you. Uh, School District Task Force will be meeting tomorrow, looks like, right, six P M.
And I'll be there virtually, just so people know.
So the school districts will be, the city task force? So, I have a, um, special request for the people on that committee, and I just want to know if we can check in with them about the, um, Seminole Hill School, just to make totally sure that we're still not, like, there's not some viable thing, because I know that they were talking about it being too expensive with the new prices and everything, but it seems like it would be nice to know, um, if the school district and the city could partner in that renovation, as opposed to just a carte blanche, like, no, we can't, we're not interested, or yes, we want to own all of it, and we want to tell you where you can have your offices, I mean, it feels like, could we have more conversation about that, and the, um, renovation potential, because that was, that's been a conversation, is the city doing the renovation at Seminole Hill?
I think, and I think that's a good thing to, to, for those people who are on that committee, I think that is definitely a, a good, um, point to raise, and I do think that the city has indicated in multiple ways that they are, regardless of what happens with that particular building, they are very interested in, in this economic climate, in working as closely with us as possible to make good use of all of the resources that we have individually and that we share or make use of, so I think it's definitely something to keep in mind going forward for those people who are on that committee. Thank you. Um, okay, uh, future agenda items, board member recommendations or questions?
Um, so is there any way, at one point, we were getting draft minutes from the committees in our packet, is there any way that we can go back to getting some of that information so that we know what questions to ask of the committees, or?
Yeah, it's actually one of the agenda items for the retreat going forward, so yes, that is, we are.
It just depended on the chair, so Richard preferred that the, they be finalized before they go into a packet, rather than be draft, so that's why there was the switch, so if you want to have the drafts, we just put the drafts in, it's not a big deal.
So the question, um, it is part of new business, but it's also a question for Joanne about, there's been a lot of media, uh, stuff about the student youth risk survey that came out by the CDC, and all of the, from twenty twenty-one, comparing it for the last two, ten years, twenty eleven through twenty twenty-one, and I would like to know, based on what you know, and what you've been reading, and what you've been seeing, and the climate, the, the New Hampshire, where, where do you see our students being right now in relationship to that survey?
So it's the youth risk. So it's the youth risk, youth risk behavior survey that they took in?
I haven't analyzed it and reviewed it. So, you know, where it goes is to certain people at the high school level. So I could talk with them and see what kind of trends they're seeing, for sure. And I wrote a note to do that.
Because I would feel very concerned about it from everything that I read, and it feels like we need to bring it to this board. I have another thing, it is about artificial intelligence, and I'm going to keep on bringing it up, because I think it's going to be a really big thing in the next five years in our educational system, and it totally needs to be on a radar, and we need to have structures.
So I have, I have information about that. I had heard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Joanne, but I'd heard that at the high school, they have started to meet to discuss our current policy on plagiarism, generally academic dishonesty, academic dishonesty, academic honesty, with relation to how do we need to change that with regard to AI? And there are English teachers on that committee who are discussing what it is that we need to, what they're seeing, and what they're going to, how they're going to go moving forward. And Karen is, I think, the one, Karen Dubois is the one running it. So they are starting the discussion of that. They've already seen, obviously, use in their classrooms, and so they're talking about what are the next steps, and how do we use it as a tool, but also how do we respond to it for teaching purposes, so yes.
But I think that there's many more constructive things as well that the kids could be doing. I mean, I just want to have it.
Yeah, they are making steps in that direction. I'm anticipating we'll hear more about that in the fall, for sure. Thank you. Okay, so important dates and district announcements. The next school board meeting is our school board retreat, which is Wednesday, June 14th, at 6:30 PM in the cafeteria. Related to that, which is under other business or just this, if you have, so the retreat, what is the retreat? So at the retreat, we will be discussing a bunch of things, including our previous board's self-evaluation. We'll be discussing goals going forward for this board. Will, the new superintendent will be at that retreat, she will be attending. She's going to be giving us her 100-day plan, her entry plan. We will also have that to talk about. We're going to have some people from NHSBA be there to give kind of a refresher and/or new orientation on board member responsibilities and things to keep in mind with right to know, et cetera, et cetera, for people who are new, and just reminders for those of us who are not. If there is anything in particular that you would like to have added to the board retreat agenda, or you have any questions about the retreat, or you would like to remember that we discussed something, or remind me that we discussed something, please email me, so that we can, we'll start constructing that agenda with, soon, so that we can have something ready for you. So anything that you think about, or if you're wondering if we have it, there's a couple of other things on that list, but Wendy, do you want to ask a question?
Can we meet in the library?
Yes.
And we've typically had food?
Right, which was an email I was going to send Joanne, so that's on my list of things to ask.
Don't forget the public hearing.
Yes, and there will be a brief public hearing for the end-of-year money switch that Tim was just talking about. Not money switch, that's a terrible word. The end-of-year transfer, transfer.
Cap reserve fund withdrawal.
Capital reserve fund replenishment. Excuse me. I want to make sure it's clear what we're saying. Okay.
To get that in a minute?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, and just FYI, the high school is going forward with their search for a replacement for the assistant principal. And Ian and I have been just talking about the makeup of that committee. I think I'm going to have one of the people who is assigned to that building, one of the board reps, assigned to the high school, be on that committee, so I'll talk to you guys in just a minute. And before we finish, I have a brief thing I'd like to say, unless anybody has any other questions.
The meeting moved to the library?
Next.
Or, I mean, the retreat?
The retreat.
Did it move to the library?
We think we're going to move it to the library, yes.
It is sort of meeting in the library now, like, wait, now, later?
No, not right now. Yes, just for the retreat, but.
One question, do we have a, do we actually know what our meetings over the summer look like? Is that somewhere?
They look like there are very few of them.
They end at the retreat.
We do not meet over the summer?
A barring unforeseen circumstances.
Like a pandemic.
Yeah, right, like pandemics, or a new superintendent. So that could change, right, and we will talk to her about that at our retreat. So yes, so that, right now, no.
Thank you.
Good question. All right, so on behalf of the Lebanon School Board, I'd like to thank Dr. Joanne Roberts for her nine years of service and dedication to the Lebanon School District. Under Dr. Roberts' leadership, the district has continued to enhance the quality of educational instruction, as we've seen in Lebanon, including the continuum of the entire educational experience for our students and their families. She has been a champion of increased student support, most recently with the addition of a district social worker, as well as a strong advocate for the modernization of our aging schools and athletic and co-curricular spaces. Under her tenure, we have completed or begun many much-needed renovations, as you heard earlier, and capital improvements. In addition, she has guided the district in the development of a process for long-term planning, which resulted in a multi-year strategic plan, a technology plan, and a facilities improvement plan, with which the district can anticipate future needs, as well as immediate needs, during the annual budget process. Finally, she was a strong advocate for the district as we navigated the unforeseen challenges of a global pandemic with its unprecedented impact on the delivery of education. And so as a token, we have a small gift for you. And we'd like to thank you, Dr. Roberts, for all of your work, and we wish you well in your future endeavors.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
And with that, meeting is adjourned. Meeting is not adjourned, ha ha. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Steve, motion to adjourn, can I get a second?
We need to check if there's anyone for public hearing, for comments?
Oh, you're right. Before we do that, Mary seconded that, I think. Before we do that, is there anyone else for public hearing online? For public comment, sorry, public comment online?
No, I don't see any.
All right, so we'll officially close public comment, and we will now vote all those in favor of motion to adjourn. Thank you, I got so excited. All right, unanimous, thank you very much.